It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand, please, and join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united in government, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Our first item tonight is to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on July the 13th, 2021. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Lurando. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. At the beginning of each session, we have a public comment period. If you have comments regarding an item on the agenda, it's probably more appropriate to bring them up at that time. But if you have any general comments, now's the time to make them. And seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. Our first item is an amendment to Ordinance 2780, the Rubrite Plan Development. The owners are Alternative Mortgage Fund LLC, Cypress Business Park LLC, and American Land Apopka Industrial LLC, and Exeter Wesley Land LLC. Applicant is Polos &amp; Bennett, in care of Kathy Hattaway, located west of north Orange Blossom Trail and north of Hog's Head Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. On August 19th, 2020, the City Council approved a plan development master plan for a six-lot industrial park located west of north Orange Blossom Trail, north of Hog's Head Road, and west of the Orlando Apopka Airport. Location graphics on the screen. Zoning map shows the zoning of the surrounding properties in the area. And the slide that you see in front of you, the light green shows the original PUD, which was approved back in 2020. The dark green is the area to be added to the PUD, which is being requested. And that's 75.08 acres from the properties to the south, which is in what's called the Avion Point Plan Development. And the lot total increased from six lots to seven lots. And the total amount of square footage for the overall buildings will be from 4,500,000 to 5,500,000 square feet. The prospective developer still proposes to construct an industrial park consisting of a mix of light and heavy industrial uses. The PUD master plan allows up to 5,500,000 square feet of industrial uses with the prohibition of specific uses that are deemed to be incompatible with the adjacent airport uses. And those uses haven't changed from the original PUD. Those are still the same uses. The master plan proposes a subdivision consisting of seven industrial lots on 424.34 acres, with lots ranging in size from 2.65 to 197.28 acres. Access to the site is still proposed via Wesley Road, Orange Blossom Trail, and by an access easement that's proposed to be established to the west of the Orlando Apopka Airport. None of that has changed from the original PUD. 25-foot wide buffer track will be provided around the perimeter of the PUD that carries over from the original PUD. Internal roadways and utilities are dedicated to the public. That's not changed as well. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. And the recommended motion tonight is to recommend approval of the amendment to the Rubrite PUD. City staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
No, sir.
Okay. And does the applicant wish to make a presentation or just available for his questions? If you would come up, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Hattaway with Polos &amp; Bennett. We are in agreement with the staff report and available for any questions. We have our project team with me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. We will close the presentation and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend approval of the amendment to the Rubrite Plan Development PUD based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stanley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a special exception to allow a tobacco shop in the MU-D mixed-use downtown zoning district for the property located at 60 East 5th Street. The owner is Kim Ha-Yong. Applicants are Narum Global Inc., care of Christopher Sagarian, President, located at 60 East 5th Street. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening.
Before you start, Jean, I should say, since this is a quiescent judicial item, I'd have to ask if anyone in the audience requests affected party status for this item. And seeing none, I would ask the commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, but here none, we'll proceed. Thank you.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve a special exception to allow tobacco shop in the MUD mixed-use downtown zoning district. The property is located within a multi-tenant center on the southwest corner of Park Avenue and 5th Street. The special exception request is for tobacco shop, and based on the land development code, it is defined as an establishment primarily engaged in selling tobacco and tobacco-related products, specifically like cigars. The applicant has recently informed staff that they intend to also engage in selling vape and e-cigarette-related paraphernalia. The proposed special exception shall be in compliance with all the above referenced standards and outlined in the staff report. The DRC recommends approval of the request to approve a special exception to allow tobacco shop in the MUD mixed-use downtown zoning district for property located at 60 East 5th Street. However, staff does not support the sales of vape and e-cigarette products as part of this special exception. Planning Commission has the authority to approve, prove with conditions, or deny the request. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I do. When the DRC looked at that, was the change from a tobacco shop to a tobacco shop slash vape shop in their decision-making process, or no?
That information didn't come to light until just recently. We got specifics that a certain percentage of products available would be vape and e-cigarettes.
So the DRC's recommendation was based on just being a tobacco shop?
Was based on simply tobacco shop. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Is it adequately clear that there's a difference between tobacco and vaping? Or if we were to go with a staff recommendation, should we put an exception into the special exception, saying it does not include vaping?
Staff recommends that you put a condition in to exclude vaping and e-cigarettes.
Okay.
Also to clarify, the land development code explicitly defines the two different, the two uses separately. There's a tobacco shop definition and a vape and, I can't remember the second word now, definition. So in the land development code, they're separately defined. So they're two separate distinct uses.
So does that mean we would not need to put a condition? Or should we put a condition for clarification purposes?
Because it was added later, the, a vape shop is a special exception in the MUD. But we would have to, you'd have to conduct then a separate finding and a separate analysis to determine whether the vape shop meets the standards for a special exception.
Okay, very good. Other questions of the staff? Okay, does the applicant have a presentation? And sir, if you do, if you'd come up and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Sagarian. I'm one of the principals of Narum Global. This entire project started out several months ago. And it was always billed as a smoke shop, which, you know, when I was younger, I used to go up to my dad to buy cigars. And you'd see a big store full of boxes of cigars. And that was it. And maybe some cut tobacco for pipe smokers. Well, obviously, things have changed. I'm not a smoker, never have been. But there are different ancillary products now that go along with the industry that people expect to find when they walk into a smoke shop. Now, we don't expect anybody in the, on the property smoking. It's not meant to be a hookah lounge, or a vape lounge, or any of that kind of stuff. It's just meant to provide the product lines that people seek out and want to purchase. So when I originally went up to the building department, and first, I do have to compliment the entire city staff, because I had such a great experience with everybody that I worked with on staff upstairs, right from the very beginning, looking at just the empty space and getting recommendations on how we should proceed and stuff. And when all the plans were drawn and submitted, they were all approved, we did things just the way we were asked to do them. And we spent a lot of money improving that building, because as you all know, it's an old building. So, you know, my point being that we don't have a huge percentage of what you call vape. But there are things like tanks, batteries, coils, things like that, that people expect to be able to walk into a shop and buy. In addition, we have a line of cigars, a line of, and so many products that the kids nowadays use for smoking, this, that, and the other, I guess. There's CBD that we're going to be, you know, selling in there. And it's an all circle. I'd invite any of you to come in and see the shop. We spent a ton of money in there. It's gorgeous. It fits in really well with the brewery and also the Propagate Social Cafe. And we're really trying hard to make that plaza a really nice area. It's certainly not meant to have people hanging around and causing grief or aggravation. You know, it's meant to be just a nice place that we can all be proud of for the center of town. I've lived here almost 30 years. And, you know, I'm very active in a lot of the things that go on in the town. And so, you know, having said that, there was a miscommunication because originally, I thought the business license was go and pay for like an occupational license, $25, and that was that. So my fault, I didn't do it, you know? But I did work with Jim, and Scott, and John, and Jennifer, and everybody on all the different things that I needed to do. We were granted some money to renovate like air conditioning, and also for the front of the building, which we're in the process of. You know, at the very end, they said, okay, go get Jim to pay for your business license. And that's when all of this came up, which happened to be just about two and a half weeks ago, when we're ready to open the store. And I'm not looking to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. I'm being totally honest with what a smoke shop is in today's definition. And I'd just like to be allowed, you know, we invested a lot of our personal money into this. We'd like to be allowed to sell, you know, the products that people expect to find in there. And again, there will be no smoking on premises within the building at all, because that was something that Scott and I talked about way from the beginning, that we didn't want, you know, any drinking in there, any smoking, any hookah lounges, any of that kind of stuff. It's strictly a convenience where people can pick up what they need and leave the store. So unless there's some questions from any of you.
I'll ask, does anyone have questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
And I would point out that what's on our agenda is for a tobacco shop. I mean, that's what we have in front of us.
When I filled that out, in fact, it's in the car. I could grab it. I filled it out as smoke shop. It doesn't say tobacco shop on my application. It didn't say it on my building plans that were approved. It didn't say it on any of the paperwork, including the temporary CO that we got a couple of weeks back when we needed to have the security system installed. It always said smoke shop. And the name of the store is The Smoke Exchange. So I don't quite know. Yes, there's going to be a great selection of cigars and cut tobaccos and all that kind of stuff. But I would be not forthcoming if I didn't say that, you know, our plan was too. Now, if I walk away from here, and I can't do that, or we have to come back and reconvene to have a small portion, I calculated with my partners today, less than 8% is the actual vaping liquids and stuff like that. 6% are ancillary products like batteries and coils, tanks. And again, I'm not a smoker, so I don't know all this stuff to the best. And then the other 5% is novelty gifts, which is less than 19% of the business that we plan to do there. It's a large space. It's 2,400 square feet. So it needs to have a good selection of everything that people will expect. And I think it's going to be a fantastic addition. And I, again, invite any of you to come see what we've done in there. It's absolutely beautiful. And not just because we did it. It's a beautiful spot.
I have a question.
Okay, a question.
When you filled out your application, and you put smoke shop, did you put any identifiers in there exactly what you'd be selling, such as tobacco products, vaping products, things of that nature?
You know, it asked for what kind of a store, so I just put smoke shop in there. You know, I'm 64 years old. And I get to the point where there are so many smoke shops everywhere now. They just have this, this look. And when you walk into any of them, they're sort of all the same. And again, I apologize to all of you for that, because it was probably my oversight, not the detail. And I detailed it in the lease, and, you know, all the different products in the lease line, because, you know, there's competition and stuff amongst other tenants, maybe. But I did not go into detail on the application. And again, that was just, it wasn't an intentional oversight. It was just an oversight. I really thought that this occupational license or business license didn't have anything to do with zoning at all. I thought it was just, you know, your license, okay, you can open the door now, you know, along with your certificate of occupancy. And I, it just never connected. And everybody, I think, at one point or the other, said something about it. But it just never clicked that it was this important, and that we would be at, you know, day zero here, ready to open the store, and now have a zoning issue. So Jen, it was great sheet. They helped us out last, two weeks ago, filling out all the paperwork, getting the notices out to everybody. And we got our signs up. And, you know, like I said, staff all the way around has been fantastic. And what I maybe mistook as complete support, because all of them, at one point, from the fire marshal, Brian, to Scott, to John, to, they've all been in there. And they've all seen what we're doing and what's going on. And not at one point did anybody say to us, oh, wait a minute. You're not going to be doing this, this, or this. Are you, you know, it was, I guess it was, I don't know, maybe just an under, a misunderstanding or an understanding, you know? But I think you all be very proud of what we're doing in there. And I just ask your indulgence in giving us the opportunity to fit in with our other co-tenants. The lady that owns the plaza is doing a really good job at bringing good people in there now. And we have, we have a really nice tenant mix. It's turning into a little hotspot for the weekend evenings. The food trucks are out there. People are getting food. They're sitting outside having a beer from the brewery. You know, I think that the mix is just an incredible thing for our city, and for that area especially over there, as we move, you know, to the south side of Main Street.
I have a question. When did the Special Review Committee decide not to include vape products?
I don't know that they ever included not to improve it. But the first that I heard about it today was I got a little email this morning from Ms. Sanchez here. And she had said in there that somebody had brought up, and she didn't name who, somebody had brought up a question about the vape products, you know? And this was the first that I actually heard about the vape, other than, you know, calling it a smoke shop and knowing, in my mind and most people's minds, that these smoke shops include all that kind of stuff.
I agree with that. But when did the Development Review Committee decide that vape products should not be included?
If I may clarify, I just put the special exception should not include vape products because it was applied for, as a tobacco shop. I just put that in. The DRC did not know that there were vape products.
So they didn't decide, they didn't decide that they should not include vape products? Well, I'm thinking a smoke shop would include vape products. I mean, to me, that's common sense.
If I may clarify, this is not an issue of the DRC deciding whether or not to include. It's the language that's in the land development code. The land development code explicitly defines a tobacco shop as an establishment primarily engaged in selling tobacco and tobacco-related products. The subsequent other definition is then a vape hookah lounge. A vape hookah lounge is defined as an establishment primarily used for social consumption of tobacco, tobacco-related, or tobacco substitute products through vape, e-cigarette, hookah, or other similar devices. So what we probably have here is, is something that fell through the cracks, in that the consumption includes electronic. However, the sale did not include electronics. And as you know, zoning codes are codes of exception. If it's not listed, it is not permitted. So what we have is in the definition of our retail only mentions tobacco and tobacco-related, while the service or use mentions tobacco, tobacco-related, and tobacco substitute. So it's a question of having to go back and reexamine the land development code to redefine or amend the definition of a tobacco shop to include tobacco substitute. However, as is defined currently in the code, that is not included as a product within tobacco shop within such a definition. So that, I go by what's worded in the code. And therefore, that's why it was not, for the retail sale of it is not included in a tobacco shop. Therefore, we have to determine that it's not a permitted use if it's not explicitly listed as a permitted use.
So it's safe to say that in the staff's review of this, it was a tobacco shop which did not include vaping?
My understanding.
And what, where I'm having a problem is, I'm not always familiar with what's in fad today. But you smoke things like Mary Jane.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, marijuana. Well, it's tobacco-like product.
Yeah, see?
Yes. And so that's where, that's where, in my estimation, you can get so down in the weeds. Ooh, that was not necessarily my intended. And then there's, you mentioned the cannabis oil, the CBD.
Right.
And it's like, you know, we're going down a slope. I don't want to go down. I want, you know, if this says that it's for tobacco, to me, tobacco is something that you would either have with a cigarette or a pipe. So loose, or, you know, something of that nature. And I don't want this to be so loose that it can open up to any definition you want to make it.
And I myself agree with you there. You know, that's why it was really, really hard to define, you know? And I just went by every smoke shop that I've seen and that we researched and we went into. And you'll see everything from little white owl cigars in there, to glassware, to Zippo lighters, to 99% Bic lighters. I mean, there's a lot of different things that fall under that category. And in fact, the Department of Agriculture now oversees the CBD and all that kind of stuff. And I talked with her. They have set up an inspection for next Monday. If you have a certain amount of space in your store that sells more than, I think, 10 square feet, then the Department of Agriculture comes in, and the Health Department, and you have to meet certain standards for that. So all of these things that I did along the way just seemed like they all came together, you know? The license from the state of Florida for alcohol, tobacco, and firearms for that. But I understand what your point is, that tobacco is not liquid tobacco, I guess, you know? Even though people nowadays, it's getting to be a 50/50 deal, where people are selling, smoking more of the liquid nicotine, because there's no chemicals in it, as opposed to cigarettes. They say that they're safer. Me? I don't know. Because I'm not a smoker.
Well, to counsel this commission, because the language is as it is in the land development code, you can recommend the approval of the tobacco shop with the restriction that it cannot include tobacco substitute products, because it's not listed as permitted use. You can also recommend to the council to direct staff to perhaps reexamine the land development code, and to amend the definition of a tobacco shop to take into consideration current modern amenities, such as tobacco substitutes, electronic cigarettes, and other forms of those new things, in order to update the land development code. But as for this use, it's going to be limited to what is the permitted use. And that would be the sale of tobacco and tobacco-related products. And I think, it's up to this board if they want to determine whether an electronic cigarette falls within something that is tobacco-related. It's not, I mean, it's, it's, it's a stretch if we have to go through definitions. Mostly these electronic cigarettes are not really related to. You're talking about water vapor infused with nicotine. And therefore, it doesn't necessarily have a direct relationship with tobacco. As for this port to decide, but probably the easiest resolution would be proceed forward with a condition that you cannot sell the tobacco-related, I'm sorry, you cannot sell the tobacco substitute products, with a caveat to have staff, to recommend, recommendation of staff to go and reexamine the definition of tobacco shop, and perhaps expand it to accommodate modern uses to include tobacco substitute products, as is contemplated in the vape hookah lounge use.
And also, were we to approve what is presented tonight, and he would, he wanted to add products, he could come back to, with another exception?
If the code is amended, then he can come back and, well, actually, if the use is, the change is defined, if the definition is changed to now include those products, he would have a special exception to that. I mean, yes, the option is, staff would consider whether he can then come in and add it, since the definition is now contemplated, or whether it requires another special exception so that the council and the city can examine any of the impacts as such. But if staff in amending it has come to contemplate that this is a new use, and then any impacts are going to be involved in the original use, he may be able to then come in and expand it, because the use, the definition has changed. This isn't a question of a non-conforming use, but that the definition has been expanded legally.
I have a point I'd like to make. We're talking about changing the land development code to be more definitive, or to merge a tobacco shop and a vape shop because of current things. Well, the land development code, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we recently reviewed the entire land development code. And the mixed-use district has very specific guidelines because of the vision of what we want and what we do and do not want. And now, in this certain circumstance, okay, we're making the exception for a tobacco shop. And now, over and above that, we're making an exception for a tobacco shop. And then we go, well, we're going to put an asterisk in here and have them review the land development code. Well, you know, the mixed-use district was designed, and unless there's some glaring reason why, I don't see any compelling reason to go and change our definition to fit this circumstance.
Not to, not to, one of the issues involved and as is raised, is that the mixed-use district does permit a vape and hookah lounge. So it permits the consumption on premises. But because of the way that the language is written, it does not permit the sale on premises. The sale without consumption on premises, however, the consumption on premises is permitted under the code. They're both special exceptions. So that's, that's where bills in cleaning up and clarifying the land development code, whether this commission believes is this something that should be considered by staff as another glitch, whereas in the zoning district, the sale is not permitted, is not enumerated. It's probably best to say it's not enumerated, therefore it's to be deemed not permitted, but the consumption is permitted. Both have special exceptions, so you have to undergo the special exception analysis for consumption. So you can have a cigar bar and a hookah lounge. Those would be, those are special exceptions, but you cannot have the, because the definition of a tobacco shop does not include tobacco substitute products, you would then, it carries towards logical extension, you can't sell them, you can't sell them to consume them at home. However, you can purchase to consume at a specific use designed for such use, like a cigar bar or a hookah lounge.
The other thing that I question is if, and you had stated that you had the buyer chief and the mayor and all these people, and nobody said anything, well, they're not going to, you don't have the shelf stock, number one, so they wouldn't know that. And I find, so during the whole process, staff was never aware that there was going to be anything other than a tobacco shop. And again, tobacco shop using that day term and saying, well, that covers everything. Well, no, the tobacco shop, in my mind, and probably in staff's mind when it was written, is a tobacco shop, a vape shop is a whole separate animal. The other contention I had is that, well, the percentage sales is going to be this, 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 and this. Well, maybe shelf space, you're going to put that much in there, but you're talking about tubes and tanks, bongs or whatever, CBD oil, that, well, you know, pretty much when you open an establishment, it's the amount, percentage of sales is going to vary based on what the market demands. So if you only have 10% of the people want cigars and 90% want that, then it's going to be different. So I don't see a compelling reason to make an exception, even for the tobacco, nothing's been presented that shows that we need to change what the code is, and that's not the question on the code, that the code is incorrect and having to have an exception for a tobacco establishment, and moreover, not, absolutely not for a vape shop or selling CBD oil, that's not, that area in my mind, in my understanding, that's not the clientele we want, that's not what that's supposed to be. And so I'm not comfortable with that at all. It's incumbent upon you or the builder or your partners to do the research and find out and then come at the last minute and go, oh, by the way, we're going to do this too. And maybe you didn't understand, that's fine, but it's still incumbent upon you, not the mayor or staff or anybody else to point that out.
With all due respect, sir.
People read what the code is, and that research should have been done, so I don't, I'm not buying it at all.
With all due respect, that was never the case. When I walked in originally, before we even lifted a hammer over there, it was always laid out, the plans, the drawings, everything were all approved as a smoke shop. And, but you're absolutely correct that, you know, we didn't list.
Did those plans have the verbiage of vape, CBD oil, tanks, and this, was that verbiage in those, the application?
All in the lease, it was, and the lease was attached.
The leases were the city, so.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I'm trying to come to a.
Would it have been staff or the city that they should have clarified this ahead of time? And my contention is that you should have had that clarified yourself ahead of time. The code is written and very easy to read, it's available online. I just, I'm not buying, it's like a last minute, oh, by the way, we're going to do this too.
No, that's not the case. That was not the case at all, and it wasn't a last minute. It was always that way from the very, very beginning. And, you know, the, if there was any misunderstanding, it was in the fact that that business license was actually zoning approval. That's where the mistake happened. It wasn't, had nothing to do with us trying to, you know, add things in as we're going and so on and so forth. It was always meant to be a full-fledged smoke shop and with all the ancillary products that go with it.
Well, then maybe the application needs to be amended to that and reapply.
You know, you guys are the experts on all this. I don't know where to go from here, other than I know that our store is ready to open. As of last Monday, when we sent out all these notices to everybody, the adjoining property owners and everything, at that point, it was still a smoke shop. It wasn't a tobacco, you know, tobacco, yes, but it was a smoke shop. And I was told that I had the support of staff, and I've talked to many of the staff members, and, you know, they did support us and do support us, I believe, all of them, you know.
The verbiage says tobacco shop, there's nothing else in any of the documents that we've got. And again, I don't believe that it says CBD oil, tanks, bongs, or whatever that is, and vaping products in any application. So if staff wasn't aware, they couldn't, it's not, again, incumbent upon them to go, by the way, you can't do this there. That's incumbent upon you, and I'm just not comfortable with it. The reason it was put into the area and that was restricted is because it's not desirable for what the city is trying to do in that area. So I still don't see a compelling reason to not only give the exception on that and then ask staff to go back and, well, let's go look at the code and see if we can fit this in, because I think the intention was, when I was written, not to have it, period.
But the intention is okay to smoke and open a hookah lounge and a vape lounge and a cigar bar, but you can't sell what you want the people to smoke in the space? I don't understand, I don't, that one piece of what this gentleman explained, I don't understand, because if you can smoke it on the property and you can set up chairs and tables and people can sit in there and smoke until their eyeballs are clouded, then I don't understand the difference between that and letting them buy something and go home with it. I don't expect people to smoke in the store. I didn't want that in the first place.
Okay.
Let me just ask one more question, Mr. Attorney. So the way it's written is to amend it to allow a tobacco shop, and it doesn't define tobacco shop. What to include, what to exclude.
Tobacco shop is defined, smoke shop is not defined.
Exactly.
So it's a tobacco shop. So your application today is to consider a special exception used for a tobacco shop, and a tobacco shop is explicitly defined as an, as a establishment primarily used for, an establishment primarily engaged in selling tobacco and tobacco-related products. So therefore, the use as would be permitted would be for the sale of tobacco and tobacco-related products. As the way the land development code is drafted, that would be what you would examine. So at that point, any recommendation as part of the special exception will include that the sale of tobacco substitute products is not permitted.
Right, and if that was desired, then there would have to be another application for another exception.
Well, no, because it would require changing the definition of tobacco shop to include tobacco substitute products.
Right.
So it, the code specifically differentiates between retail establishments and I think probably the best way to call them is the social establishments. So a cigar, a tobacco shop is limited to tobacco and tobacco-related products. However, you could have a cigar bar or a hookah lounge, because the intent is, while primarily you have a cigar bar, the cigar bar would normally also entail permitted sale of, I mean, I've, just from my own personal experience, and when I was in private practice, I mean, I did represent a cigar shop owner who actually opened it as a cigar bar and sought a beer and wine license, so that therefore it was a, it's a social gathering location where it's, you have, you're consuming tobacco products and/or tobacco substitute products, but also consuming, you can, in theory, consume beverages as well. So there's a difference between just a retail establishment and a social gathering establishment.
Okay, so let me ask a question. I don't know a lot about vaping, but does vaping contain nicotine?
Yes.
Okay, where does the nicotine come from? Is it a byproduct of tobacco?
Yes, it's a derivative.
Is it a byproduct of tobacco?
Liquid derivative of tobacco.
Well, then I think it would, I think it's covered under tobacco products.
That's what I was led to believe by alcohol, tobacco, and firearms when I applied for the license, because I asked specifically.
Yeah, if the nicotine is derived from tobacco, then it's tobacco-related, in my opinion.
Well, let me ask this. If we approve what is submitted to us, which is a tobacco shop, and somebody can figure out the definition, let them do it.
I agree, I agree, I agree. I have no problem to be in tobacco shop. I think vaping is a tobacco derivative.
Any other questions? Then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a special exception to allow a tobacco shop in the MU-D mixed-use downtown zoning district for property located at 60 East 5th Street.
Could I just ask one question?
We're in the middle of a vote, sir.
No, let us.
Oh, I'm sorry, but it was 52, our store is 52, and that says 60, is that the whole?
That's the whole building.
Okay, gotcha, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Are we going to add the, will they talk about the vape shop?
If I'm understanding it correctly, the definition of tobacco precludes that, the way it's defined in our, so.
How will that be enforced? Just asking.
It's going to be just like any other establishment or city or use in the city. If we get, if the city receives a complaint that there's, these things are being sold, then there'll be a code enforcement action.
Okay, further discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. One no? Okay, one, Commissioner Guster votes no, so that carries six to one. Okay, thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, Crossroads 429 Industrial Park. Owner is Summit Real Estate Group. Applicant is Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers, Inc., care of Georgia Stock, P.E. President, located at 2800 General Electric Road, and we have a staff presentation.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of Crossroads 429 Industrial Park Major Development Plan. The property is located at 2800 General Electric Road, west of King Street and north of Peterson Area shows that the project is west of Lake Heinegger Estates Residential Subdivision and east of State Road 429. Crossroads 429 Industrial Park Major Development Plan proposes the development of an industrial park with two buildings, Building 100 and Building 200, including vehicle and trailer parking and approximately 50 acres. Building 100 comprises of 88,882 square feet of warehouse storage area and 9,876 square feet of office area. Building 200 consists of 163,511 square feet of warehouse storage area and 18,168 square feet of office area. While the required parking for Building 100 is 55 spaces, the applicant is proposing 64 parking spaces with four accessible spaces. The required parking spaces for Building 200 is 96, while 125 spaces with six accessible spaces are provided. Maximum permitted height of the building is 45 feet. This development will have one full access connection on King Street and three full access connections on Peterson Road. The center access on Peterson Road will line up with the Grand Avian Parkway. The applicant proposes live oaks, ringed elms, bald cypress trees, great myrtles, and sable palms within the development. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Crossroads 429 Industrial Park Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
No, sir.
Okay, does the applicant have a presentation?
None.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Sir, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Gregory Fox. I live in Lake Heinegger Estates, and on the one plan, it was hard to see, but this is going to back up directly to King Street?
Excuse me? Yes.
It's going to back up directly, it's going to come all the way up to King Street?
Yeah.
So is there going to be any type of berm or anything to prevent noise? Because I mean, our, Lake Heinegger Estates is on the one side of King Street, and you're talking about building right up to King Street.
That's correct, and there's a landscape buffer along between King Street and the building proper and the dock area that will provide fueling.
Okay, so what are the plans, are there any plans to change anything on King Street itself?
Our first plan to work with the city or?
Sir, can I ask you to come up and give us your name and address again for the record, if you would, please?
John Bowman with Stock and Associates. You have the King Street right out as well as Peterson are not quite full with aisles.
Right.
So what we're going to do, what we worked out with the city and Pamerson with transportation, we're going to make them both two full 11-foot lanes, and they'll have a two-foot shoulder on each side, and that goes all the way up to West Orange, and it'll come along Peterson too. So basically, in, you know, it'll be overlaid and more or less brand-new roads. Now, that's going to be forthcoming because there's an agreement with the money that we generate for this project, and then the Coke property to the south.
Right.
They have traffic assessment money that's being kicked in, and then the city, there's going to be a third party, there's a legal agreement being worked out to who funds what.
Okay, so now are there going to be any entrances or exits onto King Street? Because currently, in plans, and as far as I know, there's still a wide was the Truckmaster Driving School to be built at the corner of 437 and King Street. So is this going to be in back of that? Is this going to encompass part of that, or?
That'll be in back, this will be in back of that.
This will be in back of that, okay.
Correct, correct. Their main entrance for the truck school is off of Orange Avenue.
Right, I understand.
And this one does have a back entrance. The side of the building for these, there's two buildings, and the side of it, which does not have entrances, is going to face King Street.
That's what's going to face King Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the entrances will be off of 437 and then Peterson?
Peterson primarily, that's their primary entrance. The building setback is also 41 feet from their property line.
Okay.
So, and that includes their, there's a landscape buffer, I think it's 10 feet is the landscape buffer, and then there's also a driveway, or a drive that's going along the side of the building. There we go, yeah.
They can't tell if they get the leaves or not.
That's, yeah, that's the main one, that, here.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Am I hearing something wrong with it?
Yeah, this is, this is where, it's 41 feet from here to the property line, so they've got an entrance here, but their main entrance is coming off of Peterson here and here and also here. And then they're also going to be doing a sidewalk going along the north side of Peterson, coming up this side, and then that'll connect in with the sidewalk here.
Right, because there's a.
There's a sidewalk already there.
There's a sidewalk on the fence side already.
Yeah, I think you're the gentleman that's through at the corner, aren't you?
No, I'm actually the third house in.
Okay, so you did get the mailing when it came out, is there a?
No, actually, we did not get a mailing about this one.
It probably wouldn't, if it was within 300 feet and you were up here, 300 feet would probably only go up to about here. So 300-foot access, it might have gotten sent to the HOA.
It's possible, dog.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we had gotten a mailing about the truck driving school.
Yes.
We had not received one about the.
Yeah, because that would be within 300 feet.
Yeah, I think we had like a neighborhood meeting, virtually.
Okay, so now this is, this is going to run as far over as the Egress for Avian Point?
Yeah, that's actually right, right here, that comes down here. This is a little bit extra that they're going to.
Yeah, Avian Parkway.
Avian Parkway, yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, because that would be within the 300 feet.
Yeah, I think we had like a, a neighborhood meeting, virtually.
Okay, so now this is, this is gonna run as far over as the egress for Avian Point?
Yeah, that's actually right, right here, that comes down here. This is a little bit extra that they're, they're gonna-
Yeah, the Avian Parkway, which is Avian Point.
Avian Parkway, yes, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's gonna run through all the way to 437?
Well, it just comes up here, and then that's the main access.
We're just gonna go, and we take Peterson and King.
And King, correct.
Yeah, Avian Parkway is that middle one.
Right.
Peterson goes to the left.
Correct.
Only, only a short distance, not quite actually up to there yet.
Right, on dead ends.
It's dead ends right there, so we're gonna, that's gonna get fixed up. But like Mr. Hiss was saying, primarily we got three entrances along Peterson, and there's one along King, and then it's about, about two miles, up to West Orange, or a mile, or?
Oh, from here to what, to Orange, I have his only-
Quarter mile.
At the very most.
Very small, yeah.
It looks long, yeah, I'm like, dude.
Okay, thank you.
Mr., do you have, again, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Fox, I sit on the board of Lake Heinegger Estates. Number one, we didn't get a notice. Number two, my only concern is the flow of traffic. I mean, I came before the council for the four-way stop sign, which we currently have on 437 and Lake Heinegger Estates. It's, Lake Heinegger Drive. It's, it's basically a disaster. If you sit out there at any time, the people going on Binion and Orange Avenue, they look around, if they don't see anybody, they blow through there. I don't know how many times there's almost been an accident. It's really hard for us to get out of our subdivision. If they're going to do this, which I don't have a problem with, but I wanna four, I wanna stoplight at our corner, so that we can get out safely without risking our lives, like we're doing right now. I mean, it's crazy, and I mean, if any kids cross the road, God forbid, I hold my breath, I mean, a school bus was hit the one time. It, it's, it's nuts, and I, you know, that's my biggest concern, is safety. You know, you wanna do all these things, I think it's great, but we need to put in the stoplights, so that we get, because the traffic flow has increased. We've been here since 2009, and in that time, that traffic has increased over tenfold. With all the subdivisions that they have along Binion Road, and everything else, and the people coming and going, and the new access to the 429, you have a lot of traffic that flies in the morning. I walk in the morning, so that's when I see the people that don't stop, and that just fly through. The speed limit's 40 miles an hour, I bet you maybe two cars do 40 miles an hour, the rest are flying like it's an expressway. And so that's where my concern comes in, for the homeowners that are living there. You know, we wanna feel safe, too, and we wanna be able to get out of the subdivision, not worry about if we start to pull out, is somebody just gonna decide to blow the stop sign, like most of them do.
In order to do a, a traffic signal, they'd have to do a warrant study.
Okay, do I have to submit a letter? I've done that before.
We can actually, we can let our transportation coordinator, Pam Richmond, know your concerns.
Okay.
And see whether or not, they did, I know they, they've got a lot of the different counts that they have to do for any type of-
Oh, I, I understand that completely.
Yeah, he did a complete traffic study, and all the intersections were functional at the level of service, there's something to be.
But that's something that Pam would have to take a look at.
Right, yeah, because you're, you're, when you put all this stuff in place, you're gonna have more and more-
We've got more and more, yeah, all over cumulative in terms of the developments, and we've got more developments on the way, so.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I would appreciate that tremendously. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, I have one more question.
Okay, yep, come back up.
With, with the two buildings here, are these gonna be like warehouse spaces, office space? Is, is it, is it, it's not manufacturing, is it?
No, there's not manufacturing, warehouse distribution, so it's mainly distribution.
So it's mainly gonna be truck traffic, just like it is, like the, the freezer company across the road?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no one else, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment, that I'm familiar with this area, because I'm on the other side of the trail, coming onto the trail from the backside of Arle. So I come on the Boy Scout side, Boy Scout to the trail, and then across, and if I'm going out to Lake Heinegger, or whatever, Binion Road, then I go across to Lakeview, which goes around the corner, over the railroad tracks, and disappears to that four-way stop sign. That traffic is a nightmare.
Yep.
The only time I have good experiences is, is on the weekends, when the tra, when the traffic light is on a demand status, rather than waiting. The traffic backs up, I counted the other day, I went and I said, all right, how many cars are gonna pile up today? I lost count going around the bend, I had already counted 12 cars, waiting for that light to change. And the big rigs, they just go over the sidewalk. You know, I mean, they try, but now we've got a truck driving school, so I don't know how that's gonna work out.
Yeah, they're, um-
But it's, it's really a problem, and the safety of the people who live there, to me, is paramount. And so I, I would go on record as saying, something has to be done on their end, to perhaps make sure people understand they're supposed to stop at that four-way stop.
Yeah, Lake, Lakeview is a, it's a, it's actually a county road, and staff has been in contact with, with the county in regards to making some changes to that. I agree completely, I, I've come up Binion Road at about 4:30, if I've been out, you know, doing an inspection, and I'll make a right onto Lakeview, and it's like, why did I do that? Because it's backed up past the, basically, you make the turn, and it's backed up. And then people that are going north, east, or west on, on 441, it's like they just don't know what, how to, how to make that maneuver, so you get maybe two cars that go get out, and then the light changes, like you were saying.
And it's gonna take one train, where people did not stop where they were supposed to stop.
Yep.
It's going to take one robust driver crashing through, et cetera. And we had a presentation not all that long ago, that on that corner of Lakeview and the trail, so that would be the southwest corner, I do believe.
Yeah.
There are plans to put in a convenience store, gasoline-
And we don't know if that's gonna come through or not.
Station. Is, is that our land, or our land of Apac-?
It's in the city, yes.
Or is it county?
It's in the city.
Well, that's helpful. So it's, it's not gonna get any better.
No.
It's gonna get worse.
That's one of the biggest issues.
Worse, worse, worse.
Yeah.
And we're not widening those streets, we're not doing, you know, there had been talk, oh, well, we might widen the street to this or that. The other thing they do is they go, they go through the parking lot, where the restaurant used to be.
Mm-hmm.
And I watch people almost get cleaned, coming out onto the trail. So that whole area needs some really heavy traffic.
One of the options, there's a, there's a road over just to the west of where that gas station was looking to go, and we were looking to shift some of that property over to the west, and get additional land on Lakeview to be able to put in a turn lane, so that we could at least get some of that traffic that's going eastbound, to be able to turn and get, get out of the way, I guess you'd say. But up until we get some players on both of those properties, on the southeast and southeast corner of 441 and Lakeview, we, we really can't do much of anything, and of course, Orange County has to play a major, major role in that, they've gotta approve the access for that southwest corner, and then the southeast corner's kinda limited because of what they've got right there, you know, in the first place, for the woodshed.
Exactly, I mean, there's already one gas station there, there is the closed restaurant, and the closed automotive shop, which changes hands frequently.
Yep.
Right now, it's closed. So you've got-
It, it's, it's not a good situation right now, plain and simple, for sure.
Thank you for listening to my two cents. Maybe that was a nickel.
There's no change, I get, I get all that.
Okay, we're back with the, it's back into the commission's hands, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, find the Crossroads 429 Industrial Park Major Development Plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of the major development plan, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report exhibits.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stanley, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Guster, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no, and that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? There being no further business to come before the commission, we'll be adjourned.